Good evening, West Orange. My name is Council President Tammy Williams. Today is June 30th, 2023, and this is a special meeting for the council. Madam Clerk, the opening statement, please.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on June 28th, 2023, and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on June 28th, 2023.
Yes, we're going to wait for the roll call. There are two of my colleagues who will be joining us virtually. They had already committed to plans for the holiday weekend, and because we do have this hybrid format, it is fully allowed and permissible for them to dial in so that we can have a quorum for this meeting. Our other councilman is en route and will be here, Councilman Rutherford, in person. Unfortunately, he had a commitment at a funeral this morning and has indicated that he will be about five to 10 minutes late, and we are also waiting on our mayor to arrive. I just did want to open the meeting and advise the public that we're going to start momentarily so that those of you all who were trying to participate via Zoom would know that, yes, we are having this meeting. We do anticipate that it will be a brief but informative meeting, so we're just going to ask for your patience as we allow my colleagues and the mayor to arrive. So, thank you. We're just going to take a short recess until we have a quorum. Thank you.
Council President be advised, Councilwoman Castellino is in the meeting.
Thank you.
Could you also find out from Councilwoman Scarp, I see a Susan in the audience. I don't know if that's her.
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay, thank you.
Can you hand me Council President?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. I can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're quite welcome, and thank you. Thank you. And we'll just give the mayor a couple of more minutes. Take us out of recess and call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, the roll call.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilwoman Gebre Michael.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Scarp. Council President Williams.
Present.
Mayor McCartney. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Good afternoon, West Orange. Thank you for your time and attention here today for our special meeting specifically to discuss Resolution 254-23 for the authorization for the Parks and Recreation Department to host the Fourth of July fireworks for the municipality of West Orange. Our objective today is to affirm the administration has implemented safety protocols given some of the safety concerns that presented themselves during our event in 2022. I am clear that it is the administration's responsibility to plan and implement safety protocols to protect our residents. This presentation from the administration and the mayor will hopefully satisfy those concerns. After the presentation, we will have public comment, and my colleagues will certainly have an opportunity to ask any additional questions. It is my goal for this meeting to remain brief so that everyone can enjoy their holiday weekend. Madam Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much. Excuse my tardiness. We just had the Junior Police Academy graduation ceremony this afternoon, so it was very lovely with 90 students graduating. So, good afternoon, council colleagues and members of the community who have joined us. After Tuesday night's council meeting, questions were raised when the Fourth of July fireworks resolution was presented on the town council agenda. I thank you all for your time and attention today in scheduling the special council meeting, so I can, in fact, present to you the work that has been done by the Office of Emergency Management to ensure a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July for our community. I do know that the planning for this year's event started July 5th, 2022, and our township is and has always been a day-long celebration, one that spans 85 years. Let me start this presentation with the Recreation Director, Bill Keough, along with Ed Johnson, and Candy Marek, who worked to organize all of the fun and family-friendly activities for our July 4th.
Council President, I believe Councilwoman Scarp is in the meeting. Councilwoman Scarp, would you please identify yourself?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, for the record, all of our colleagues are here. Thank you.
Bill Keough, Director of Recreation Township of West Orange. We started internal meetings the day after Fourth of July last year. We do that every year. We sit down and we, you know, what could we do better? What went well? What could we modify? What would we change? So, it's been a long process. When we met on May 31st, I indicated that I appreciated the support of the council for understanding some of the obstacles or whatever, and we have been working diligently, as promised, to come up with a good way and a safe way to present this event, and from the recreation standpoint, that has been achieved. We are comfortable moving forward, and we ask for your support on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. And if we can have any additional speakers from the Parks and Recreation Department, from the Fire Department, certainly now would be an opportunity for you to do so.
Good afternoon, Council. Tony Vecchio, Fire Chief. To Mr. Keough's point, this is pretty much a routine event for us. We are in possession, as are you, of the permit for the event from the Recreation Department, which includes the application from Garden State Fireworks. We received it on June 9th, which is traditional. That's the past few years. That's when we receive it. It goes on the next council meeting. So, we're prepared. Our fire official, Captain Joe Matullo, has his crew ready to go. We inspect the fireworks on the day of the event. That's pretty much all I can say. If you have questions, that's probably why I'm here, if you have questions. So, feel free whenever it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you, and we'll come back to you if we have any additional questions. Is Chief on the call?
Yes, Chief Abbott is on the call and able to hear you.
And is Mr. Alagreno on the call from the Office of Emergency Management?
Not seeing him, Council President, but I will continue to check.
Okay, not a problem. Chief, if you would be so kind to give us an update on the safety concerns that were addressed at the Tuesday meeting and what your department has done to provide safety measures for this event.
So, a little historical perspective here is, you know, I ask, everybody should ask, like, how did we get here? What is normally pretty much a routine benign event for council, a resolution that's required by the DCA to have these fireworks kind of morphed into a broader discussion? Unfortunately, I was at the state chief's training conference, which, with every other police chief in the state, and I wasn't able to attend myself. Any message that was conveyed, misconveyed, misunderstood, misconstrued, any combination of that, I would just like to put on the record that that falls squarely on my shoulders. That's not to be a reflection of any member of my staff or the Police Department on a whole, so I accept full responsibility for any miscommunications. Last year, we had two incidents. One was a robbery where some personal effects were taken from some of our youth by some young adults from outside of town. There were immediate arrests made. There was nothing of, you know, extreme violence or anything to be overly concerned with. I mean, it's an unfortunate incident, but when you get 7,000 people, five to seven in an area, sometimes things happen. What was equally disconcerting, there were juveniles who threw fireworks as a prank, as juveniles do, and yelled "gun". This caused somewhat of a little bit of a stampede. Somebody could have been injured. Nobody was, thank God, but again, it wasn't anything horrific. And the other issue was a lot of minors smoking marijuana, and past council and current council were all eager to address this and have us give more of a presentation this year, and overall view from a thousand feet of what, you know, we expected to occur this year. So, we normally critique all major events, as Director Keough pointed out, and this was no different. One of the things we came up with was the need for substantial increase in personnel, and we've accommodated that. That goes back even before this past Tuesday council meeting. That was in place. The criticism of the venue is that it's not the most perfect place in the world because it's kind of wide open, but it's the best place we have to do this if we're going to do it. It's better than Rock Spring, and quite frankly, I think Rock Spring's the only other place we could accommodate something like this, and it wouldn't work well there at all. So, you know, this is our spot, and I mean, that was really my thoughts, and I think anybody else that was involved with this, that this would have passed, but we wanted to point out that there's always, you know, cautions and concerns, and we want everybody to be aware of that. You know, again, it may not be the most desirable, but it's what we have, and our goal here, and I think everybody's goal, is to put on a world-class event for our residents and their children and families who come and join them on this special day. A lot of towns don't do this. We continue to do it. If we're going to, you know, do events like this, then we understand that, you know, all risk is calculated, and this is no different, and we do everything we can to mitigate that risk and keep everybody as safe as possible. No entity guarantees perfect safety for anybody. The safest car manufacturer in the world will brag that they have the safest cars in the world, but they don't tell you when you get in and turn the key, you're going to be guaranteed a safe trip. Nothing, cars, trains, airplanes, our children go overseas as part of their educational experiences, and there's risk involved in everything. So, everybody needs to understand there's risk, but again, the police, the fire, the Board of Ed, the rec, the DPW, the Health Department, there's so many mechanics and moving parts to this that I'm probably leaving somebody out unintentionally. We're all going to do our absolute very best to ensure that we have the same safe event we've had for every year since I was a little kid back when it was Colgate Park, and I used to go to my mom and dad. So, we're confident that we can make this happen. Again, if, you know, if we shut this down, what's next? The St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Main Street Fair, the flag raisings, every event has some inherent risk to it, but, you know, I for one, and I don't think anybody on the dais or in the audience wants to live in a bubble the rest of our life. We're Americans. We enjoy freedoms that no one else has, and I think we need to express that with our sentiment tonight. I know there's been some tumultuous ongoings between the administration and the council recently, and I would like to personally commend everybody for collaborating on this. I understand the council's trepidations based on what they had heard, and I think that they were well-intentioned, and they had the community's welfare in mind, the mayor too. And again, you know, we all pulled together, as West Orange is so well-known for, and I think this exemplifies that we have a commitment to the residents of our community like no other. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Fagan, do we also have Superintendent Moore?
Superintendent Moore is on the call, Council President, and I just want to say if Mr. Alagreno is on the call, please identify yourself by raising the hand, and I will promote you to panelist.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, if you would add any commentary as the superintendent for the township of West Orange and the location at West Orange High School, I would be greatly appreciative.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate that. I think it's best that I first say, one, I know Nick Alagreno, I'm not sure if he's on the call, but he did a terrific job of coming together. Next, I would like to second Chief Abbott's, Chief Abbott's kind of explanation on coming together and how we collaborated. I wanted to thank him for that because it has been a strong collaboration. For me, as the superintendent, you know, the, as the steward of the building, and as our students attend, and our parents attend, and our families attend, safety is always paramount, but I have to say, I have to repeat what Chief Abbott said, and thank the town council also for taking a close look at this, but there is a terrific plan in place. Thank you, Nick Alagreno. Thank you to the Chief, Chief Abbott. Thank you to Tony Vecchio, our Fire Chief as well. Thank you to Joe Pelosi for DPW as well, and also Principal Guerrero, who came out and joined us in the meeting as we all stood onto the campus and came up with a plan and collaborated in a plan that I think will be satisfactory to the town council and will be safe for the residents and make sure that we give our township a fun and safe Fourth of July. I also thank you for the opportunity for me to weigh in as a resident parent and superintendent of this fine town. So, thank you to all of you, and I'm glad the mayor got us together to collaborate. I assure you that we worked hard on a collaboration to make sure that this is a safe event. I think once you take a look at the plan and you review it, I am confident at this moment that we have something that is viable. Prior, I just wanted to bring up, you know, with, and my intention originally was to bring up the fact that we have grown in this event and with the growth of the event, and again, I've had nothing but great collaboration with the police, that we will need their presence, and they were eager to help, and I think, though, that now that council has taken a pause, we'll be able to show that and demonstrate that for you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you as well.
Council President be advised, Mr. Alagreno is on the call and should be able to hear us.
Thank you. Mr. Alagreno?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you.
Apologize for my tardiness.
No worries. Thank you. We appreciate that you're here now. And if you have information you would like to share regarding the preparation for Tuesday's fireworks, please, now would be the time to do so.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I just want to, I'm not sure what was mentioned earlier, so I apologize if I'm repeating. You know, we look at these plans on a year-by-year basis. This plan was actually started on July 5th of last year. You know, Mr. Keough had recognized the issues we had last year, called us into the meeting the following day as kind of a hot wash to what we did, and we all agreed that we needed to make changes. You know, as we became closer and closer to the event, we ramped up our meetings, we put the plans together, we finalized the plans, they're ready to go, and, you know, with the hopes of the council approving the fireworks for this year, we, we're going to send part of those plans out to the public with some rules and regulations that we would like everybody to try and follow to help us with the safety plan. Other than that, it's been a work in progress for quite a while, and we have it in a spot where we think we're going to do the best we can to keep everybody safe and fun and have an enjoyable evening and day.
Thank you, Mr. Alagreno. Now, I would like to ask my colleagues if they have any additional questions. They would like to ask any of the staff that has already had an opportunity to provide explanation.
Yes, I have questions for Chief Abbott. Chief, have you, you know, have you addressed the ingress and egress points? How many cops were assigned in 2022? And then this year, how many more officers will we have? Is there an emergency plan in case something happens? Is there an ops plan, operations plan? Can you share that with us? And also, if you can address the traffic concerns, were officers posted intersections last year at Eagle Rock and Pleasant Valley Way and Pleasant Valley and Elisa Drive and Conforting, Eagle Rock, or any other intersections, and will there be officers this year?
Excuse me. So, I don't want to make the operational plan or the security aspects public for obvious reasons. I would be happy to have that shared with you and council individually, if that works, but I would ask that you not put that on any kind of social media for, again, once again, for obvious reasons. Officers are at the intersections. I'd rather not speak about numbers of officers, but let's just say we've at least doubled what we had last year. There are, there is a map that's going to be available on social media for ingress and egress. There are emergency evacuation plans. In instances of emergencies, by human nature, they don't always get followed because people have a, you know, fight or fight, the natural instinct that they're born with, so they don't always, but we're aware of that, and we try to kind of herd people toward the designated entrances and exits. Nick Alagreno, if he has the plan with him, he can probably explain where those are and what portions of that are to be made public.
I'm unfortunately on my phone, and I don't have access to those files at this point.
I can, I can get them to you if you want to see them. That's, that's not to Nick, to council. I can get those.
Councilman Rutherford, do you have any questions?
I do. Chief, thank you for joining us today. When we met on Tuesday, I asked the Deputy Chief a direct question, and the question was, is it safe? And the response I received did not indicate his confidence in the safety, and I understand that you've taken responsibility for any miscommunication. This is not to place any blame, but my question now is, even though you've increased the personnel, is that increase adequate, given the scale of the event and the amount of space that it covers at the school?
So, to reiterate my earlier point, we believe it is. I mean, that's, you know, like, as Nick pointed out, this started the next day last year. So, we've looked at this, and that number was in place prior to last Tuesday's meeting. We looked at it once again. We don't feel the need to increase it further. You know, I always reluctantly throw out that caveat that things can go sideways anywhere. You know, you go to Giant Stadium, they pat you down, you go through a magnetometer, they have bomb dogs, this, that, and the other thing, that we don't have the luxury of all those things, but at the same time, these are public events that municipalities do. Livingston's doing one, South Orange is having fireworks, I don't believe, but an event, you know, it's, it's, all risk is calculated. I don't think that this is in, I don't, I don't think that we're having blind faith here that nothing will go wrong. I think that we've taken all the responsible calculus and responded appropriately. My analogy before was with the safest car makers in the world. They don't guarantee you a safe trip when you turn the key, but they've done everything they possibly can to ensure that you do, and I think that's kind of the same thing here.
I understand. I don't think anyone is looking for a guarantee. We know that that's literally impossible with regard to safety at an event like this, but because the increase in personnel had already been done before the deputy chief made those comments regarding safety, what has changed since Tuesday, or was it just that that was a miscommunication?
I think it was a miscommunication, and again, I accept full responsibility for that. That's on me.
My last question, at least for Chief Abbott, also involves our mayor. Have you reviewed the the security plan with the mayor?
I've been on several conference calls with not only the mayor, but Mr. Rose, Mr. Drink, you know, our legal department, Mr. Keough, Mr. Alagreno, I think Hayden was on the calls, just about everybody. I mean, I'm probably leaving somebody out, and it's certainly unintentional, but we've had a number of calls to go over this as recent as yesterday, again, final call. So, I think we're, I think we're prepared. I believe in my, my staff that they're up to the task, and, you know, again, and I appreciate your candor that you understand nobody can guarantee you a safe event, but at the same time, we're going to do everything in our power to absolutely ensure that it is.
Mayor, have you reviewed the security plan? And are you satisfied with it?
Thank you, councilman. I think I want to back up a little bit with what you just said about, you know, you bluntly asked, at the council meeting, is this safe? And Deputy Chief said no. And the reason I called you the next day was that the rest of that sentence would have been, we have been working on a safety and security plan since July 2022. So, not safe meaning 7,000 people in a confined space. Yeah, I think he was saying, telling you the truth, that that's not safe, but protocols and local officials that are here, the whole OEM coordinator and team, we did meet last week, went through the security plan, safety plan. There is a map that I understand is going to be presented that shows the ingress and egress. I also want to add that the county was also part of that, and the county delivered equipment to us that had been requested. So, I'm going to say, yes, I, yes, I did at that meeting review that plan, and we have had since, we have since had follow-up meetings that we have been assured that it will be safe.
And you're satisfied with those assurances?
I am. Thank you.
Any more questions, Mr. Councilman Rutherford?
Not for the chief.
Yeah, additional for other directors who spoke?
Yes. Mr., is Mr. Moore still on the call?
He is.
Yes.
Mr. Moore, thank you for joining us. It was reported to us at Tuesday's council meeting that your position is that the high school isn't suitable for this event. Is that an accurate characterization of your statement or sentiment?
I think it's outside my scope to really tell you whether it's suitable or not. What my statement was based on last year's, the movement of the crowd last year, and the location of the kids that set off the fireworks was my main portion. I was worried about more of an increase in personnel and a... I was worried about more of an increase in, um, personnel and a, uh, and the closing off of certain sections on the campus in which I think nefarious activity can take place and, and, and also, um, and I believe we've gotten it taken care of. Again, Nick, I want to just shout out Nick Alegreino for a fine job of involving the sheriffs where we'll have a more lit situation in the back. In terms of the, again, I think it's outside my scope and I would probably defer to the chief and, and, uh, experts when it comes to whether, uh, the high school is the safest place. What I do think is, I would like to be pro, I wanted to be proactive at the OEM meeting and just discuss the crowd as I've seen it grow over the years. And with the growth of the crowd, I think, uh, and I see that it has happened in this plan that you will get to view some mitigating. I think we had to mitigate that a little bit, just to accommodate our progress and growth in the event. So that's really my, um, stance. I'm not, uh, certain, uh, whether it's ideal or not. And I think as Chief Abbott indicated, it is where it is now and it fits our needs now. But if we can mitigate where it is now, maybe, uh, we can give our, we can assure a little more safety going forward. So I was there to, uh, make sure that maybe we can mitigate it since what has happened last year, being that, you know, I thought that last year gave us a cautionary tale on crowd control and, uh, that was my, uh, concern.
So, so you, you do not have a position on whether or not it is, the high school is a suitable location for this event, i- in my understanding?
Yes, you're, you're, you're right about that. I don't have a definitive opinion on that or so because, um, I'm not, you know, I think there's more to safety and how crowds work than I'm, you know, to be honest, that I have enough experience to comment on. I, I just, as long as I know the event is at the high school, my position was, okay, I understand. However, um, I just wanted to take that opportunity in the OEM to talk about an increase in, um, emergency officials and a, uh, and, and, uh, making sure that we close off certain parts of the campus and light, and make sure we light certain parts of the campus. As I know the campus well and I was, and I thought I would be able to contribute in that way.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moore. I do have, uh, one additional question for Mr. Keo. What have you learned or what did you learn from the experience last year? That makes you confident that this year will be different?
We, we recognize that there were some difficulties. We also recognize that our event is growing exponentially, um, in terms of attendance. So the thing that we learned is that, you know, what you do in 2002 is not necessarily how you approach things 2003, 2004, et cetera. Things change. You have to be ready to modify, upgrade, change things to keep it, keep it going smooth. And we think we've done that.
So are there specific lessons you learned from what happened last year with regard to crowd control? That has informed your plan this year?
Absolutely.
And can you share those things?
I think Mr. Moore just did. And Mr. Abbott just did. There's an increased police patrols, greater numbers. There's certain areas of egress that are blocked off. Uh, certain areas of the, of the campus that are blocked off. And there's a, a much greater, uh, egress coming out of the baseball field and the soccer field that we had last year. So I think we've, I've hit, I think we've hit the hotspots. I think we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Keo.
You're welcome.
On to, to my colleagues.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scarp, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, do you have any additional questions?
Thank you, Council President. I don't have any questions, but I just want to make a couple of statements because I just want to attest to the fact. Last year, uh, on July 5th, uh, I spent the good part of the day on the phone with, uh, Mr. Keo, the former mayor, uh, Chief Abbott and, uh, ma- many residents who, who had contacted me. And, um, yeah, this has been in the works and, um, I also was present, as I mentioned, at the meeting and I don't want to, you know, say too much there, but, um, you know, I could attest the fact, you know, Mr. Moore did a great job presenting some, you know, soft spots. Being the former school board member, knowing the complex, knowing the personnel staff and, you know, having the school board, I mean, uh, the school district, um, you know, a little bit more involved this year. Cause they could identify students, uh, for us as well. If, if, you know, we see any, any, uh, activity. Um, I think it's all a great thing. So I think all of them did a tremendous job. They've been working really hard. Uh, Mr. Keo Candy, they, you know, they've, you know, and, and his staff has been going for a while. Mr. Alegreino with OEM, um, just being, you know, creative ideas and thinking out of the box. And, um, I, I appreciate all the efforts that, that went into this. So I, I did feel comfortable Tuesday night. Didn't want to move the motion, uh, forward because I know, uh, my colleagues, uh, didn't. And I, I, I appreciate the chief for, um, you know, for saying what he did today because it, it was hard. It, it, it was hard and I appreciate, um, the commentary today. So I look forward to, uh, continuing our, uh, our event in West Orange. You know, we are West Orange and we, you know, we, we do, we tend to make our, our, our residents and especially our children safe. And again, you know, we've had the band competition up at the high school field with thousands of, of people. We've had regional wrestling tournaments with thousands of people. Uh, street fair last week, we had, um, almost 6,000 people the year before. It was raising flag raising was nerve wracking this year because of some, uh, rhetoric that was out there. Um, and I commend our, our police department and our, our fire officials and PDW for doing what they need to do. So yeah, any event you can't guarantee. But we do what we, we need to do. And I'm going to reach out for any parents who are listening that have teenage, uh, uh, children. Um, you know, you, you hope that when families come, um, I know sometimes kids get dropped off. You know, be mindful, have a conversation with your students, uh, with your students, with your children. Uh, and, and behaviors on, on the complex, um, because it's important. There's a lot of little kids. Families were heartbroken and devastated, uh, just the thought of us canceling this event. And it's, it's not fair to them because as we know, young families, uh, they just, uh, live for moments like this. And, uh, I, I go back to a couple of years ago when COVID hit and, uh, the recreation department was looking at, uh, canceling the, uh, tree lighting. And we thought out of the box and we had drive bys, uh, Santa. And look how great that night was. So I, uh, look forward and positive for, uh, family friendly, uh, uh, event for, for Tuesday night.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mm-hmm. Thank you. Okay, um, now would be an opportunity if the public would like to comment before we take the vote on the resolution. And now would be the time for you to comment. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to comment? Thank you. Your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't know that you were going to permit public comment, so I'm, I'm appreciative that you have. My name is Michaela Bennett and I live at Old Indian Road. I was here on Tuesday night. Um, I listened to, um, the honest testimony of Councilwoman Castellino who said that the superintendent was opposed to the fireworks occurring. I also listened to, um, members of the administration, particularly Mr. Gross, who reiterated over and over again that there's just no way of making this safe. That was Tuesday night. I was here. You were all here. And admittedly, I've missed a portion of the meeting, but I heard Councilman Rutherford's questions, direct questions about, well, what's different since Tuesday night? Risk and liability is one of those things where if nothing has changed since Tuesday night, if there was just an error, then we should be very clear on the record that Councilwoman Castellino spoke in error, that the chief of staff, formerly the business administrator, currently the CFO, spoke in error. That essentially important members of the administration spoke in error. And that this will be, as far as they're concerned, a safe event. So I caution you, um, obviously I would like the fireworks to, um, to happen. But I caution you, since you took action on Tuesday night or you didn't take action on Tuesday night to move this in for a vote, that as you move this in for a vote and take action today, that you have assurances on the record that there will be, um, risks mitigated for safety. Otherwise, you expose the entire community to liability if something, God forbid, occurred. And frankly, I don't think that's your exposure. I think it's the, um, lack of, of clear communication from this administration and the failure of this administration to spell out for you what's in place. But now that you have on the record, it's absolutely unsafe and it shouldn't happen. I think you need to hear specifics as to how or what has changed since Tuesday, or you need people to admit that they spoke in error and that there was a mitigation plan already in place, uh, prior to Tuesday night and they just didn't know and they miscommunicated. But either way, they put you in a very, they, either way, the council, uh, the administration has put the council in a very bad situation. We all saw the backlash after Tuesday night. Everyone, including the mayor, blamed the council for fireworks being canceled when it was the administration who recommended that it didn't occur. So I just want to make sure that the record is clear because I'm sure that this council took a lot of flak since Tuesday about counseling, uh, canceling an event that you actually didn't even take action on, on the advice, doing what you thought the administration wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Anyone else in council chambers for public comment? Mr. Fagan, is there anyone in the Zoom audience for public comment?
Any member of the Zoom audience wishing to address the council, please raise your hand for this section of public comment.
Seeing none, public comment is.
We do have one. Christine, uh, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christine Bosco, uh, Mason Place. I, I agree, uh, with the previous speaker. I think we should be looking, maybe going forward. And I believe this was brought up at the council meeting on Tuesday of keeping it just for the residents within the town. I know a lot of other towns have done this for years. I know Nutley does it. I know Bloomfield. And I think, um, it's something we should look at because as Mr. Gross said, um, a lot of towns are getting rid of their fireworks. And we're having this overflow of people coming to see him in our town. And it, it's getting to the point where we can't call it, we don't have it. Uh, I know in Bloomfield, they do it. I believe that's all I feel. I think, I believe it's, uh, fenced in. They have a lot more control. Um, and when somebody comes in, now they will accept people from out of town to come in, but they do charge you. So it's kind of a deterrent for people who don't want to pay. It's just something I think we really need to look for, uh, in the future. I'm not so, uh, feeling comfortable going forward with it this year. Because I guess my concern is that should anything happen, uh, the town's taken on a really situation with the liability here. I would hate to see a child with someone coming in and lighting off firecrackers or not even more fireworks. They have these rockets down that they can buy, um, and see a child get hurt, a young child. I, I, that would be horrendous. So that's my feeling about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Fagan?
Zasha Kademi, please, uh, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, my name is Zassa Academy and I live at Four Dawes Avenue. So I wasn't here Tuesday, but I did listen, uh, for, on the, the recording. And I'm very, very torn at this moment because I love fireworks, always have, want to bring my godchildren to fireworks and so on. But the way that I'm hearing it, the way that I listened, it doesn't sound like a safe place to come to. And I live right down the street from the high school. I would walk if it wasn't a smoky night. And when I say I'm torn, I'm torn about a few things. I'm torn about the, like, we're all under a haze of smoke right now. And I know everybody's going to poo poo that that brings more smoke. But that aside, my gut is telling me this isn't safe for you to bring your godchildren to Zassa. You know, this, this is too many people. It's too crowded. There's no new safety protocols in place to keep kids from bringing in fireworks or guns or other things that could cause stampede. So I'm very concerned and I won't be coming and that saddens me because like you said, uh, you know, I, I would like to, I would like to come. Uh, and I second what that person, Christine, I believe, said before me that, that maybe this should just be for residents of the town because it's, it sounds overwhelming. It sounds overwhelming and unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kademi. Any additional comments from the Zoom audience?
Uh, Rachel Keen, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, uh, Rachel Keen, 22 Schmidt Road. Um, I just wanted to say, um, thank you to everybody who spoke today. I think that the last meeting just, uh, could be chalked up to a lot of miscommunication and misrepresented, um, viewpoints. And like, we're all human, we make mistakes. I did notice that there seems to be a lot of tension, um, between different members of the town council and between the council and the mayor. And that's very disappointing, just as somebody who, to be honest, I, I really have never paid attention to anything the town council does. Um, it's just disappointing to, you know, see, uh, the dysfunction and maybe not always hearing one another. Um, I also think that it's very polarizing because when somebody you don't like says an opinion, um, you probably automatically take the opposite opinion just instinctively. Um, we all do that. So I hope you guys can, you know, talk about it and get along. And, uh, you know, just do that for the sake of regular people like me who live in town. Um, I am a mom of two young kids. They're three and a half and seven years old and we can walk over the fireworks. Um, we might do that or we might just watch from our house, but you know, that's a risk that we take and that's our responsibility. You know, people make their own choices. If you don't feel safe, you can stay home. Uh, personally, there is reward to every risk you take in life and I plan on living my life. I remember going to fireworks as a child in Verona. You know, those are core memories and my kids have never been able to go. So they are finally old enough to go and, you know, that's my choice if I choose to take them. So appreciate the dialogue and I hope you guys have a great Fourth of July weekend.
Thank you. We appreciate your commentary. Mr. Fagan, how many people do we have in Zoom?
Council President, there are 117 people in the Zoom audience and currently I see no hands raised for public comment.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment.
One just came up.
I'm going to close public comment.
Okay, public comment is closed.
And if there is anything different to add regarding the support or denial of the fire or non-support of the fireworks, with this being a special meeting, I want to be mindful that we specifically targeted this time. Um, so that people would be able to be a participant during their lunch hour. I have colleagues who are here during their lunch break. So I want to be respectful of not only just my colleagues, but also to the public. Um, so as I am closing public comment, um, if there is anything different to add, uh, we have received commentary from those in support and we have received some commentary, um, from those who are, are torn and not certain. And then certainly I have personally, along with my colleagues, received over 100 emails directly to our inboxes, um, allowing us to receive verbatim, the language, the sentiment and the concerns from our constituents. And then we have all heard here today the preparedness and the preparations from our administration. That being the case, all those things being considered, I'm going to ask my colleagues, is there any additional comment that you would like to make? Or can we go ahead and move toward a vote?
Council President be advised, Councilwoman Castellino has her hand raised.
Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, just, just a quick comment because my name was brought up, uh, in pub, public comment. Uh, I just want to clarify the remarks because I did make, make a remark. I just want to clarify the remarks because I did make make a remark in regards to being in that meeting with Mr. Moore and I don't know, I didn't watch the tape of how it came out, but I know what I meant to say and Mr. Moore did have concerns in that meeting, which he also reiterated this afternoon of what occurred last year because of various soft spots on the campus. I thought that was clearly mentioned and it was also clearly mentioned that those soft spots were addressed for this year's activity. So I just wanted to clarify my remarks and make sure they're on the record in the way I intended them to be. And I apologize if they came out any which way different. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Councilman? Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. Given what happened last year and the commentary Mr. Keough gave us in his presentation during the budget hearings regarding this particular event, if if the chief or his designee was going to be invited to make a presentation, I think all of the leaders that have something to do with emergency management and first responders, facilities management should have been able to present as well. I think had that been done and we had additional voices to hear from, perhaps the the outcome would have been different. We only heard from the chief's designee and his statement was clear, at least to me. And as as someone who has to take into consideration the safety and welfare of all of our residents, just hearing that particular commentary made it very difficult to move the the vote forward. We'll also correct our mayor. There was a statement put out that said we we voted against it, we voted it down and we canceled it. I just want everybody to be clear, we did not. We we failed to put the motion forward. All five of us had concerns. And those concerns made it very difficult for us to move forward with a vote at that time. If we wanted to cancel it, we would have put the motion forward and voted against it and that did not happen. So I'm excited about the Fourth of July this year in particular. This is one of the few years that I'm actually able to go with my family. Most of the time we travel during this week. We're not this year. But because of that, I want to make sure that it is actually safe. So on the record, we have the mayor saying that she's satisfied with the security plan. As our chief executive, we have to follow her leadership and guidance in that regard. Our chief of police, our fire chief, our director of parks and recreation, our office of emergency management director have all and our superintendent of schools have all echoed the same comments today. While they share concerns, they all feel that those concerns have been adequately addressed. And that's the advice that we have to rely on when we make these votes. So after hearing all of that, I'm prepared for the vote.
Thank you, and I am calling the vote, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gebra Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. Thank you to everyone for your endurance, for your patience. We appreciate and this is what, when I speak to civic engagement and this is truly our response to civic engagement. I want to thank my colleagues for taking time out of your busy schedules to make sure we responded to the needs of the public. I want to thank the administration and all of the directors who took time out of their weekend to come here and make sure that the five of us had a very clear understanding of what is going to take place and how we can proceed as community. Certainly, I echo the comments of my colleague. This was not the intent for us to stagger, to stall or to even cancel our Fourth of July celebration. We all realize that this is a tradition in West Orange that has superseded all of us. However, as I stated on Tuesday, there were so many different emotions that we had to go through in real time as we were making these decisions and uncertain decisions that we will have to continue to make that just gave us pause and none of us were prepared to take on that risk with not having those answers, those questions answered at that time. So again, I thank you. We look forward to a tremendous Fourth of July celebration. Let's start it off here now. For those of you all are here, we have ice cream in the conference room. We have pizza and let's start this Fourth of July like West Orange has never seen before. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Have a good Fourth of West Orange.
No, I wanted to say thank you and I wanted to say to the councilmen, thank you for any misconception that came across on that council meeting, which is why I called the next day to apologize for that. I did edit that statement. I stand corrected. It was a moment. It was a moment. We were wrapped up in that moment, in that moment. So I just want to say thank you to you for the vote, but I do want to say thank you to the OEM team and the coordinator and all the department heads that weighed in and the Board of Ed. I just say thank you and here's to a safe and enjoyable outdoor experience on the Fourth of July.
Thank you. Cupcakes and ice cream, everybody.
Take care, Miss Jones.